Okay, 5:15. I call this meeting of the Mount Vernon Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. I need a motion to certify the agenda.
So moved.
Motion made by Brooke, seconded by Scott, all four. That is three and five. Let the record show that LeAnn Ramsey is not present and Robert Taylor are not present tonight. And tonight, in honor of last month, which was FFA month, and we have a snow day or some bad weather coming in, we excuse the members from that meeting and got things done up here, but tonight we have our FFA members, they're gonna do our prayer and the pledges are in part of their stuff, so right now I'm gonna turn it over to them and they're gonna go through their ceremonies. So, Madam President.
The meeting room will come to order. We are now holding a meeting of the Mount Vernon FFA chapter. Madam Vice President, are all officers at their stations?
I shall call the roll of officers, determine if they are at their stations, and report back to you, Madam President. The Parliamentarian.
Here by the copy of Robert's Rules of Order.
Your duties there?
It is my obligation to know and share information about parliamentary law and assist members in proper meeting procedures, and I can assure that every member will be heard and the majority will prevail.
The Sentinel.
Stationed by the door.
Your duties there?
Through this door pass many members of the FFA. It is my duty to see the doors open to our friends at all times when they have welcome. I care for the meeting room and paraphernalia. I strive to keep them comfortable and assist the President in maintaining order.
The Reporter.
Stationed by the flag.
Why by the flag?
The flag covers the United States of America, so I strive to inform every man, woman, and child may know that the FFA is a national organization that covers from the state of Alaska to the Virgin Islands, and the state of Maine to Hawaii.
The Treasurer.
Stationed by the emblem of Washington.
Your duties there?
I keep a record of receipts and disbursements, just as Washington kept his farm accounts. I encourage thrift among the members and strive to build our financial standings through savings and investments. George Washington was better able to serve his country because he was financially independent.
The Secretary, stationed by the ear of corn. Your duties there?
I keep an accurate record of all meetings and correspond with other secretaries wherever corn is grown and FFA members meet.
The Advisor, here by the owl. Why by the owl? The owl is a time-honored animal of knowledge and wisdom. Being older than the rest of you, I am asked to advise you from time to time when the need arises. I hope my advice is based on true knowledge and ripened wisdom. Madam Vice President, why do you keep a plow at your station?
The plow is the symbol of labor and tillage of the soil. Without labor, neither knowledge nor wisdom can accomplish much. My duties require me to assist at all times in directing the work of our organization. I preside over meetings in the absence of our President, whose place is beneath the rising sun.
Why is the President so stationed?
The rising sun is the token of a new era in agriculture. If we will follow the leadership of our President, we shall be led out of the darkness of selfishness and into the glorious sunlight of brotherhood and cooperation. Madam President, all officers are at their stations.
Thank you. The Secretary will call the roll of members.
There are approximately thirty members and guests present, Madam President.
Thank you. FFA members, why are we here?
To practice brotherhood, honor our cultural opportunities and responsibilities, and develop those qualities which an FFA member should possess.
May we accomplish our purposes, I now declare this meeting of the Mount Vernon FFA chapter duly open for the transaction of business or to any matters which may properly be presented. Mr. Aaron, you have the floor.
Okay, so do, at this time, do you have, we can do our prayer and pledges? Do y'all normally do that at the very end?
The pledges are at the end.
Okay, let's change that this time and we're gonna do them with a break. Does that work? Is that gonna throw you off?
A little bit, but we'll figure it out. Would you like the pledges or the prayer first?
You choose. Let's do the prayer first, how about that?
Good evening, school board members and guests in attendance. This evening, on behalf of the Mount Vernon FFA chapter, we would like to begin tonight's prayer by recognizing and bringing attention to the diversity of people that make up our school community. Our community in this FFA organization... Excuse me. Bring... Sorry. In this FFA organization, it prides itself on inclusion and welcoming all backgrounds of people. The prayer tonight will be delivered in three different languages, English, Spanish, and Dutch, all by our own FFA officers. Cynthia Castillo, Emma Van Deeden, and myself, Kelsey Devilla. May we please bow our heads in prayer?
Por favor inclinemos nuestros rostos en oración.
Mogo va ashe bviht onshohten bahawen.
Dear Lord, I want to thank you on behalf of all who have gathered here today for the opportunity to come together to conduct the affairs of the Mount Vernon School District.
Quiero, querido Señor, quiero agradecerte en nombre de todos los que están reunidos aquí hoy, por la oportunidad de reunirnos para dirigir los asuntos del distrito escolar Mount Vernon.
Honsa Váder, ek u bedaakneem vandag te gaan ongom. Ik kom in zaden met de Mount Vernon School te gled te leiden.
I thank you for empowering the lives of each and every one of the leaders in this room, our school board, our teachers, and our community members.
Te agradezco por empoderar las vidas de todos y cada uno de los líderes en esta sala. Nuestro consejo escolar, nuestros maestros y los miembros de nuestra comunidad.
Ek beni dam Vád for het leven en eder van de alleders. On school bester on oomoot en ons leiders van de commensaal.
I pray over the agenda set before them today as they discuss and take action on items of business that will influence us all.
Oro por la agenda que se les ha presentado hoy mientras discuten y toman medidas sobre asuntos que nos influyan a todos.
Ek ben beideur over die agenda van de allemalde wendel ozen.
Lord, let their discussions lead to plans of prosperity for our students and future members of this town.
Señor permite que sus decisiones conduzcan a planes de prosperidad para nuestros estudiantes y futuros miembros de esta ciudad.
Váder van de beluistreint van de leider, twan en mawalvot van de wendel van de Vád.
In Jesus' name we pray.
En el nombre de Jesús oramos.
In Jesus' name, Váder Vád.
Amen.
How do you lead the pledges, Madam President?
Can we please all rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
All right. Thank y'all. So at this time, we're gonna have some special recognitions. Dr. McCullough?
All right. Wow, let's give the FFA a hand.
You know what? While it's on my mind, right before we do that, y'all stand up and tell us your names and your position, your officer position. So all of you, just go ahead and stand up, that way we know who you are.
My name's Ty Sanders and I'm a Parliamentarian.
I'm Brady Ingram, I'm the Reporter.
I'm Shane Brown, I'm the Sentinel.
I'm Dusty Barrett, I'm the Treasurer.
I'm Kelsey Devilla and I'm the Student Advisor.
I'm Emma Van Deeden and I'm the Secretary.
I'm Betsy Tober and I'm the Vice President.
I'm Cynthia Augusta U and I'm the President.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. We're gonna take a few to honor our teachers and our auxiliary members of the month, and we are going to back up one to February that was not here, and it's not her fault. It is my fault, and I apologize to you for that, but we wanna make sure that we honor you. So I'm gonna ask Ms. Ashlyn Hodges to come forward, 'cause she was Auxiliary Staff Member of the Month for February, and we had a nice towel made for her, but we forgot to let her know that she was supposed to be here. So anyway, so let me go back, and we read this, I read this last month, but I wanted to say it again since she's here. So this is what was said about Ms. Ashlyn. So I'd like to nominate Ashlyn Hodges for Auxiliary Employee of the Month. I see Ashlyn in the gym multiple times a day. She is so patient and loving with her students. She is willing to do whatever it takes to make sure they're getting the most out of PE. I've seen Ashlyn run with her students on the track, which means multiple times a day, throw, roll, underhand toss balls with them, calm them down when they are having a meltdown. She is so patient and kind, they could be kicking or hitting her, and she just talks to them softly and tells them that it's not okay. She can always calm them down and redirect them to what is needed. She deserves so much more than just an award. So our February Auxiliary Staff Member of the Month, Ms. Ashlyn Hodges. Want to say anything?
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Next, we're gonna go right to our March Auxiliary Staff Member of the Month, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Bruce Parr to come forward. Mr. Bruce has been a member of the Mount Vernon ISD staff for 21 years. Bobby speaks very highly of him, says he shows up, works hard, does his job without complaint, and is probably one of the quietest workers that we have. But he does a phenomenal job taking care of our grounds and our buildings, and we are so glad that he is here, so it's my honor to present Mr. Bruce Parr as our March Auxiliary Member of the Month. Congratulations. You want to say anything, Bruce?
Uh, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations. All right. Next, if I could have Ms. Leanna Brantley come forward, please. All right. It says, "Ms. Brantley goes above and beyond every day to help her students learn and grow academically, socially, and behaviorally. Ms. Brantley works hard to provide varied opportunities for every student to be able to learn and interact in ways that make them successful. She is always smiling and happy to work with all students, no matter how challenging. Ms. Brantley often works late to do the paperwork and documentation for her students and to search for new ways to keep her active classroom learning and happy. She communicates well with the other staff and shares what she is doing. Ms. Brantley is dedicated to Mount Vernon ISD and her students. We are very blessed to have Ms. Brantley as part of the Mount Vernon Education family." So our March Elementary Staff Member of the Month, Ms. Leanna Brantley. Congratulations. Any words? Okay, you're welcome. Congratulations. All right. Next, if I could have Ms. Laura Hollenquist.
Oh, I got some words.
I know. They were giving you time. All right, it says, "Here at Mount Vernon Middle School, Ms. Hollenquist is highly valued as a teacher and Social Studies Department Chair. She maintains high-quality instruction each and every day, and she refuses to lower the bar for any of her students. In addition, Ms. Hollenquist often provides excellent ideas and feedback to help improve her campus. It is not uncommon for her to be one of the first teachers to arrive on campus and one of the last ones to leave. She is dedicated to helping her students, even if it costs her valuable family time. Due to remote learning earlier this year, Ms. Hollenquist challenged and trained other teachers to utilize new technology. As a leader amongst her peers, we are blessed to have her as part of the Mount Vernon Middle School family. Thank you for your sacrifice each and every day to love and grow our students." So congratulations. Ms. Laura Hollenquist, Middle School Teacher of the Month.
Thanks.
The floor is yours.
Okay. All right, really, I just wanna say, thank you, it's great that you'd be a Tiger, but I just wanna say to you guys, I've taught all of y'all, and like, I love y'all, and I believe that each tomorrow depends on the love we give today, and you guys, like, y'all, I'll just fill my heart up. Like, I've been in eighth grade so long, I don't know how long, and y'all did some good work, you know? And I told my, I told my eighth graders the other day, I said, "It's gonna be okay, you're gonna get to high school, find your like-minded people," and y'all found your like-minded people, and I'm so proud of y'all. Just wanna tell y'all, I love all of y'all. Thank you.
Now you know why she was Teacher of the Month. And for our High School Teacher of the Month, we can have Ms. Elizabeth Jocelyn come in. She can come?
Yeah, absolutely.
Says, "In her first year at Mount Vernon High School, Elizabeth Jocelyn has proven to be a wonderful and talented addition to her ELA department at the high school. She has a strong background in both teaching English and with helping students plan for their future, making her a perfect fit for our dual-credit English program. Ms. Jocelyn teaches senior English, dual-credit English, and pre-AP sophomore English. Students in her classes are challenged to critically think and accurately read while combining those skills into their writing. Ms. Jocelyn uses a variety of teaching strategies to keep students engaged, and a favorite strategy for her students is when she uses her background in debate, having them discuss opposing viewpoints in an activity called Philosophical Chairs. She works hard to develop quality relationships with her students, but also holds them accountable to her own obligations in the classroom. Ms. Jocelyn is a great colleague and works collaboratively with those in her department to plan high-quality lessons to engage students. She is always conscientious of fulfilling all her professional obligations in a timely and efficient manner and can be relied upon to help in whatever way is necessary. We are thankful to have Ms. Jocelyn as a Mount Vernon High School Tiger. Congratulations." Want to say anything?
Thank you.
Okay, all right, very good. Congratulations, always, you all come back up? Yeah, you all come back up.
Just stand, 'cause we're gonna get in front of y'all, so if y'all just wanna stand around, this is the quickest.
Come on, everybody come back up. All four of y'all, five of y'all?
Let me ask one favor. Can Ms. Ashlyn move to one end of the other?
Yes.
Okay.
Right here.
There you go, that's okay.
All right, quick here, one, two, three, one more. One, two, three.
Very good. Congratulations again.
Yeah, so y'all need to roll. Hey, we do this every month, and we don't take it for granted, we're serious. Now, this time last year, this is Thursday night, this time last year, we didn't know we were fixing to go into our last day of school tomorrow, so y'all kick it into high gear. Mount Vernon, one of the first schools to have students back in the classroom, in here, can you bellyacheing, we got in there and we got it done, we're fixing to graduate here in a couple of months, so thank y'all.
Thank you.
Have a good one. I didn't either. Is anybody here? So, at this time, we're gonna enter into our public hearing in 2020 Texas Academic Performance Report, TAPR, so Ms. Y, are you gonna give that one?
Yes, sir.
We're gonna be in this?
Yes.
Okay.
So what you have before is two things. You have the annual report in hard copy as well as the online version in Word Book, and then you also have the highlights that I'll cover with you this evening before you. And so wanted to cover again, going into public hearing, to go through our 2019, 2020 Texas Academic Performance Report. And again, what the taper covers is it covers all of our student performance over last STAR performance year, if we would have had STAR, as well as all post-secondary performance, AP and dual-credit performance, and student and staff demographic information going into that. The annual report, again, required to present an annual report and have available for public, which covers the Texas Academic Performance Report, our PMS, actual financial data, which we already covered through audit, through the auditor's report, as well as the first rating with Cam Van Dever, the special ed determination status, which is covered on the front page of the Texas Academic Performance Report, any designation distinctions that we received through STAR, as well as our accreditation status with TEA, the progress of our campus performance objectives, where we are within those goals and progress for the year, any violent or criminal incidents for the prior year and post-secondary institutions. So all of that is covered in that hard copy before you. Those will then also go to campuses, the public library, and the post office for review. The first page of the taper, again, covers the accountability rating, the special ed determination status, and our ASBAB status, if we are not administering it, which we do administer the ASBAB here, so we have no indication on that. For the 2020 school year, the state has rated not rated, declared state of disaster, so we have no accountability ratings for 2020. Also, we received needs requirements for our special education determination status that did not cover, obviously, any STAR data. That covers the results-driven accountability indicators that we are measured, which took the place of PMAS. It also covers four federally required elements, so that is how we earn that status as well. STAR performance, again, feel like a broken record, no STAR performance for spring 2020 due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Any data from that 2019 year was actually presented to you at the July 23, 2019 board meeting, also available on our website for anyone who would like to review that data. The college career military readiness, and that has been a focus, so I wanted to draw some additional attention to that. The high school is working very hard to make sure that we are hitting those CCMR indicators for all graduates that we have coming through Mount Vernon High School. So just to clarify what constitutes a college career military readiness indicator, TSI criteria, earning dual-credit course, meeting an AP exam score of three or more, earning an associate's degree, earn ONRAMP's course credit, and ONRAMP is actually a program that you can register for, so it's actually kind of a state-level program for schools that maybe that don't have dual-credit access, because they don't have a community college nearby, so that's an alternative to that. Career, earning an industry-based certification, a student that is classified special education, which graduates with a completed individual education plan and workforce readiness, CTE coherent sequence of coursework that falls to an industry certification, enlist in the Army, graduates with an advanced degree and is also identified as a special education student, or you graduate with a Level 1 or Level 2 certificate in any workforce education. So those, again, just kind of bringing your attention to the indicators that we're working on. So for that, when you're looking at college career military readiness, now again, this is back data, so for this particular one, we are looking at 2019 graduates for the 18, 19 school year. We had 127 graduates for that 100% graduation rate from Mount Vernon High School, so out of that, we had 85.4% of our graduates earning one of those indicators from 1 through 11 out of 127. You can see at the state level, state level was averaging about 73% of their graduates. For students who aren't only college-ready, so that would be indicators of 1 through 5, we had 55% of our students, and students that were earning out of indicator 6 through 11, we had 61.4% of our graduates for that school year. Again, that has become such a focus, and you should see this number increase from here on out as we work towards that. Dual-credit course offerings, of course, with our association with NTCC for our 2019 graduates, and these would again be graduates who earned at least three credit hours in English or math, or at least nine credit hours in any subjects to get this level. So we had 50.4% of our graduates earn math. This just lets you know, again, what dual-credit courses we are currently offering at Mount Vernon High School. TSI results for our 2019 graduates, this is a percentage of graduates who met the TSI criteria on the TSI assessment, which is required going into community college. You can also exempt out of that based on certain STAR scores on your ELC. So at this point, for those results, for reading and to earn that, you had to earn a 351 or higher on the TSI for reading, so we had 46% of our graduates hitting that level. For math, you had to earn a 350 or higher, we had 12.6% of our graduates hitting the math component on the TSI. And then for both subjects combined, 12.6% of our graduates, again, compared to the state. SAT, ACT, this information you're looking at, this is where our graduate took either SAT or ACT. So out of our graduates, we had 58.3% that took one or the other of those exams. Out of those 58%, we had 47.3% that were at or above SAT or ACT criteria, and that would be in math and reading or composite score going into that. The average SAT score, so again, this is kind of leading into our post-secondary readiness, which is also a measure of our accountability going into the high school level. All subjects, and again, an SAT score, a max score is 1,600, just to give you a point of reference. So the state average was 1027, Mount Vernon High School graduates were at a 1098 on average of all subjects. For English Language Arts and Writing, that is a max score of 800, as well as a max score available of 800 for math, our graduates were at a 568, again, above the state average at 517. And then for math, we were at 530, again, average SAT score. For ACT, the max score is a 36 for an ACT composite, as well as a 36 for each subject area, so going into all subjects, for Mount Vernon High School, 22.3 was your average ACT, above the state average of 20.6, and again, exceeding state average at 22.4 in PLA, and exceeding math at 21.5 for your ACT math, and exceeding with a 22.5 in science. So exceeding all state levels across the board in our ACT area. As you know, ACT, I, this is a personal opinion, I believe that it's a very well-rounded exam for students because it does cover multiple components. SAT, you have to be a pretty aggressive, English Language Arts or an English student as well as math, a lot of upper-level math on that, excuse me, SAT math, so you're geometry, algebra two, there's some trig. So I've always said, depending on where you're headed, take both, but if you're great in English or you're really great in math and you're looking at engineering, just depending on where you're going for college, so, and what works best for you as a student. Texas Institute of Higher Education, now this is actually going to your 17, 18 graduates. So we had 102 students that graduated in the spring of 2018 that were entering college in the 18, 19 school year, so when you're looking at this Texas Institute of Higher Ed, kind of think back, we're actually, you're back on that, because it's lagging data for us. So in this information, out of that 2018 graduating class, we had 73.5% of that class enrolled in some type of higher ed, so that could be community college or a higher institution. Out of that, what they have started measuring, and again, that's just to see, are we preparing students for college, they are saying, if any students had to complete a developmental course, and I will tell you, the most common one is math, so once they go in, if they're scoring low on a math placement exam, they'll have them redo college algebra going in. So all of that is an indicator that just says, out of those students that entered, we had 50% that took some additional support class to get them going. Again, very common in Texas. Going into that, again, this is something else that is also, I think we've been three years now, that we've had to present, that they are also tracking GPA for that first year in public education, so again, going into that spring 2018 graduating class, out of those students who entered, that gives you a breakdown of where their GPA was for that year. Going into student information, student information, and again, this would be for our last school year, we had 1,577 students coming into that year. This gives you a demographic breakdown, and I will tell you, there was knowledge fluctuation from previous year to this year, so our demographics are staying pretty solid as far as student population. For student information, looking at that, this is just a breakdown of any identifiers that we have, and if that has to do with acceleration, how we have to track them, or just to make sure that we're hitting, so for example, at-risk, we have to make sure that we're providing services to any student that's at risk of dropping out. This just gives you an indicator of our difference between 18 and 19 versus 19 and This just gives you an indicator of our difference between 18 and 19 versus 19 and 20, just for comparison. Again, those numbers are not fluctuating much. Student enrollment programs, again, not much fluctuation between the number of students that we're serving in valuable ESL through our C T E program. Our G T's stayed the same, and then the same as our special education, so within a percentage fluctuation. Staff information for 1920, we had 232.8, and the reason that that's such an odd number is it measures F T Es, which would be how many sections teachers teach, what percentage of the day that employee works, including that cafeteria worker, okay? And as you can see, 54% of our population of staff are teachers that we serve here at Mount Vernon I S D. They are our largest population, going into that with auxiliary staff being our second, so obviously making sure that we're taking care of them. Our teacher information for 1920, and this again has trended pretty close, out of the 126 teachers that we have here, 75, 76% of them coming in with a bachelor's degree, with 23% of them with a master's. We have one teacher, Dr. Spears, who does have his doctorate going in. The no degree looks a little deceiving, and that is Ms. Norwood, who is our cosmetology teacher, who obviously is not degree through Texas, but has her cosmetology license. So that's always looks a little weird when you say teacher, no degree, that's C T U. And then as well as our breakdown of years of service into the teaching field, one of the things that I think that I brought this up last year that I'm so proud of is that we have a very unique situation here at Mount Vernon, that we have a lot of experience in our classrooms. And I think that that is something that you don't see in some of your metropolitan schools where you have a lot of mobility. Teachers jump from school to school very close, they can, because it's pretty easy to commute, and so it's wonderful to see the longevity that we have with our teaching staff. As you know, just trying to survive your first five years of teaching is very difficult, so to have teachers that we have that are in year 11, year 20, that are really here for students, like I said, I think we're very fortunate enough. Actual expenditure per student, and again, this is just a breakdown, something that we look at. Per student, and again, this data would be for 2018, 19 spending, is how much is a state spending per student versus how much is a district spending per student? And really, what we do in that is we just look to see, are we being equal in our programs and how we're funding our programs? And so this is something that we just personally, that I'm looking at to track to see, are we serving in all areas that we need to be serving? And so again, this is a breakdown, and as you can see, from the state to the district, we're trending pretty closely. An area that, like I said, I think that you've seen more of an uptick is guidance and counseling, because you are seeing a lot more programs coming in to school districts that are focused on social, emotional, you have coming in and doing some partnerships with counseling services, and just, we're getting much more support through school districts in that area. Trauma-informed care, there is just a lot well beyond instruction. I would say classroom teachers are responsible for monitoring and watching every aspect of a child, all the way down to any indication of anything that would seem out of the norm, and then how are we providing some type of service to that student? So much different role. Campus performance objectives, again, that is in your annual report, and that is just, again, those strategies and performance objectives, and where we are at this point in the school year towards that progress of meeting that strategy. The report on violent or criminal incidents, out of the 19 incidents that we consider violent or criminal, we have zero incidents here at Mount Vernon I S D, and that is wonderful, as well as our school violence prevention and intervention, which is overseen by our police officer here in district, as well as in support with our safety committee.
So, Officer Miss White, was, she's our, of our assistant secretary, she put this, and we could have this.
You're welcome, Miss White.
So now we're going to go to item six, consider the approval of our consent agenda. So, officers, I'll kind of tell you all here and there kind of what's going on in this meeting so you kind of know, but the consent agenda is, we group several different items together, and we have all this stuff on an iPad that's emailed to us, we look through it, and if we have any questions on it, then we go over them in here, and if not, we vote on them and then move on. So if a board member has like a specific one, if they want to, we'll pull it out and we'll talk about it, we get all of our business, it kind of took a period before. Are there any questions on that consent agenda? Yeah, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion made.
Motion made by Linda, I second it, all four. That's five oh, we'll move on to our action items. Item number one, consider approval of 2021, 2022 Franklin County Appraisal District operating budget. Mind the right spot, Josh? We're going to go lead over here, and...
Okay, everybody ready on that?
Yep.
Franklin County Appraisal District has sent us their operating budget for the 21, 22 school year, it is included in your, in your packet. They are proposing an increase of $13,353 or a 2.6% increase for a total budget of, and Mr. Nea is here, she can correct me if I'm wrong, or if you have questions, I didn't see her walk in. So a total budget of $520,352, and so if you have questions for her, she is here.
And I do apologize for coming in late.
You're right on time. You're right on time. You're not late at all, you're right on time.
But if anybody's got any questions, please feel free to ask. The majority of these changes are due to Senate Bill Two that came down last year, and that we had several things that we had to implement at the state's request, and one of them is being a humongous tax database that the tax office and the other entities will enter information to, but we are to be the administrators of. So that will be going online in August of this year, and that is one of our biggest issues this year.
And as you already know, and as you see in our packet, Mount Vernon I S D is the largest entity of that, our part of that $520,000 budget will be $300,302.
Any questions on that? Okay, so I need a motion that we approve the 2021, 2022 Franklin County Appraisal District F C A D operating budget as presented. Motion made by Josh, seconded by Linda, all four. That is five oh. On to item B, consider approval of 2021, 2022 district academic calendar. Talking to a fellow?
I didn't let Chandler step up, so I'll let her just speak on that.
Chandler.
Just going to stand up here for V C A D.
That's right.
Just hang out up here.
Several things she's, she's up to take care of.
So we did create two academic calendars and sent them out for draft with a comparison chart to all Mount Vernon I S D employees for voting. And once again, neck and neck, we had 116 responses to voting and four vote difference between Draft A and Draft B. So Draft A won with 60 votes, beating out Draft B, which had 56 votes. So before you is Draft A for approval for the 21, 22 school year. And something that looks a little different this year that I want to spotlight is, we have a requirement through House Bill Three that all of our elementary teachers K three, any teacher that teaches in grades K through three, any subject that does not have an E C twelve certification has to go through and take the Reading Academy through the state of Texas. And we are required to do that, and we do have a deadline to get that done. With 40-plus teachers, that is very difficult to try to get subs in because they do those throughout the year. And so to make that happen, I worked with Region Eight and asked if they could move those dates to a Monday so that we could embed those in our calendar, so that our campus has the ability to go to that Reading Academy without worrying about sub coverage, and those elementary teachers have the ability to do that together, as opposed to having it in Wave One and Wave Two, they can work together on it. So what you have is those blue dates, which we do have professional development dates normally in a calendar, but the reason that they are placed where they are is because those are specific dates to Region Eight's Reading Academy, which is why January looks a little wonky. We wanted to allow teachers to have time when they come back in January, that was always a time for me as a teacher, I appreciated to kind of get my class ready, get things ready to roll before kids came back after break. January 17th would normally be our professional development day or our holiday, depending on what we had voted for the year, and Region Eight has that date on the 24th, so that's why January is a little odd. The other thing is, we do try to back up our bad weather days in April. Well, that kind of messed us up as well because our Reading Academy day is April 11th. So to try to make it work, we moved a bad weather day to April and another bad weather day to after STAR testing, to try to give us those bad weather days looked in. So again, just a few things that are not the normal in our academic calendar and the why we put them where we did. The red day on August 3rd is actually a flex day for teachers who complete their compliance, or actually teachers, all staff who completes their compliance training during the summer, but if we have a teacher that chooses not to spend a day in the summer to do it, they can come back a day early and do compliance training on-site. So that is an option.
Okay, so we're running this calendar here, you kids are going to be starting school if you're not a senior, August 12th, Thursday. You're going to come to school two days a week.
Yeah.
Any hope?
Coming by senior quote.
Okay. Any more questions for Miss White on the calendar? I'll make a motion that we approve the 2021, 2022 district academic calendar as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Linda, all four. That is five oh.
Thank you.
Item C, consider approval of proposed amendment to Mount Vernon I S D District of Innovation Plan.
Okay, we do have certain exemptions, we do have a District of Innovation Plan in place, and what we had realized recently with this school year, for example, we have not in the past really had this come up as an issue, and so we decided we really need to have this amendment in place, and this will be a goodwill to teachers, and I'll tell you why. Texas Education Code requires teachers to work 177, 87 days of service, 187, that is an education code, that is just a requirement. Under the District of Innovation Plan, they allow school districts to exempt out of the 187, that way if you're running a calendar and you needed to work 185 days, or it was in proportion to the student days, because we don't run 180 days normally anymore with our minutes. So we went to the District of Innovation Committee and I presented to them, and we voted and approved this amendment for your consideration, where we will allow teachers to work less than 187 days as needed, based on our academic calendar for the local school district. So open enough, it doesn't have a certain number of days on it, but it gives us that. What it does specifically, for example, this year, normally, we would have to bring them back, and they would have to work and make up those days that we were out. So the days we were out for COVID in September, the days that we closed for playoffs, the bad weather that we just missed, normally, we would have to come in on Saturdays, we would have to work long days, or we would have to work longer after kids leave because we were paid 187 days with money, with obviously school funds. So this allows us to not have the teachers have to make up those days under this District of Innovation Amendment.
So we know that's five days, snow days, we had...
Well, really four, Monday was already...
Okay, so we had four there, and how many?
Two COVID days.
Two in September, then we had a two-half, which is really one day, and then we had one full day in December.
Okay, so seven, six or seven days?
Four, six, seven.
Okay.
Next, eight. Four and two, and two halves. So again, so in saying, I mean, this is, this amendmentary D O I really is more geared toward what we've done this year, but again, also the unknown of years to come.
Right.
I will say that moving forward, our calendars, as you see, and for our teachers, are going to be built around a 187, because again, just from a student standpoint of trying to be sure we get the number of days made for our students, and also for our teachers to be sure from a professional development standpoint, to be sure that they're continue to have the level of preparation that they need, and how they work days in their classroom as well, unless something else comes up, meaning, like for next year, it'll be set on a 187 for teachers, but this will still be in place if another shutdown or a snowstorm or locusts or whatever's left, so.
We're going to base our calendar on 100 days.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we need a motion that we approve the proposed amendment to the District of Innovation Plan as presented. Motion made by Brooke, seconded by Linda, all four. That's five oh. Thank you. The next one is D. Yes, consider approval of proposed revisions to local policy E I C, academic achievement class ranking.
And what you have before you and for Brooke is the actual proposed wording, this has gone through T A S B Policy Services, and so the blue indicates the actual change, and then the red is the strike throughs for the old wording of E I C local. Recently, we had a situation where we were looking at policy and we realized that it was implied, so our practice, we were doing that, but there had actually been an update a few years back that explicitly stated that in E I C local. So as we were looking, I realized that we had missed an update in this policy, and then there was a couple of other things that needed to be updated based on some changes that happened back at around 2012. So what you have before you is the change to E I C local, and the two major changes that you will see, the first one is, we have made an addition for highest ranking graduate. Again, this was normally understood with school districts that your highest ranking graduate is your valedictorian. You would think that that is a no-brainer, it's not. And the reason is because you can have students transfer into the district at any time, okay, that are bringing in their GPA. Well, most school districts have some type of statement in their policy that says that you have to attend the high school for a certain number of semesters, in our case, it's two years, you have to complete your junior year and your senior year here at Mount Vernon High School to be even considered for valedictorian. Well, without this wording, you could actually have someone come in who has not been attending that has the highest GPA but doesn't meet valedictorian requirements, but reads the requirements for the state. So T E A allows school districts to make that a determination, this is actually the exact wording that most, every school district I've seen, as a matter of fact, every school district that I've been in, this is the exact wording, which is the valedictorian is the highest ranking graduate. So all that is, is now it's explicitly stated without any question. The other thing that changed is for what type of courses that you could qualify in what level, okay? So back in, and I can't remember exactly, but within the 12, 2012 or 2013 year, there was a lot going on with special education, and so at that time, they changed the law where you could no longer classify any type of title or make any kind of modification if it was a special education class, for example, an English resource class. So students that were pulled out for services in that instructional setting could not say resource or special education. They should be running just like a general ed classroom because the student, that is their instructional setting. So when that change was made, they also made the change that you could not determine a different weight for those classes. Those classes had to wait just like your general education, Algebra One, or English One, or whatever class was comparable to that. So with that change, so again, seeing that had not been made within this policy, so that change has been made for the incoming class of 2024. So students graduating in 2024, you will have three levels of classes for GPA weighting as opposed to four levels of classes for GPA rating. as opposed to four levels of classes for GPA rating. So normally, what you see is level one, so normally, and again, I don't wanna speak out of term for Mr. Glover, but that is normally your general ed regular classes, your basic classes. Your level two then would be some advanced, some honors classes, upper level CTE classes. Your level three is your AP and dual credit classes. So again, to distribute that weighting appropriately. So again, does not impact your sophomore, junior, and senior class. Does impact your incoming freshman or your freshman who is this year, um, in the end of the policy.
Any questions? Would have any impact on me.
It may wrap where you were anyway, right?
Yep. All right. So it recommended that we approve the proposed revisions to Local EIC Academic Achievement Class Ranking as presented. Who wants to make that motion? Motion made by Scott. Seconded by Josh. All four. Five oh on that one. Consider approval of adopting resolution regarding employee pay during weather emergency.
Okay, as, as you know, when we were closed to four days because of the snow and ice, it was where really not anybody could get to school, not just our teachers and our students, but even our hourly employees could not either, other than Bobby and a couple others, a couple of days, just to come and check everything, make sure everything was good. But just as we did for teachers in regard to changing our DOI, or amending our DOI to not have to make up those days, we have a resolution that we have before you that is in your packet that we are asking for you to approve, that will in essence allow us to pay our hourly, hourly employees who missed basically that week of work as well, to take care of them just as we're taking care of our teachers.
Any questions on that? So not all districts are like Mount Vernon, but we have opportunities and we take them if we can. We have leadership teams here, Dr. McCullough, all the principals. Pay them, just a lot of different people get together and they decide things. If we have money in our budget, and we do, we can take care of them. We do that because the people that are up here cooking your lunch and cleaning up after y'all, they couldn't come to work because they didn't cook for y'all or whatever. So we're gonna be able to take care of them for that week. And we're proud to be able to do that. All right, need a motion that we adopt the resolution regarding employee pay during weather emergency as presented. I'll make that motion, do I have a second?
Second.
By Brooke, all four. That's five oh.
Thank you.
Consider possible action to amend board resolution regarding precautionary leave.
Okay, well, as you know, we had, the board acted on this back in January in regard to since the FF-CRA leave was discontinued December thirty-first. The motion that was made at that time, or the decision that was made, would be for those, the staff or teachers or staff who did not have to utilize the FF-CRA leave in the fall semester, would have it available to them in the spring. And those who did use it during the fall would not be eligible for it again in the spring. And so Brooke, after we, after we took the, after we stopped requiring masks in the February meeting, Brooke asked us to put it back on, on the agenda for this month, so it is back on the agenda for discussion.
Okay. I just personally feel that we should amend it, tweak it a little bit to protect our staff overall, all of our staff, that could be impacted if they are exposed on campus or in the course of their job duties for MBISD. And I think they should be covered, period, if that exposure happens while they're working. So I don't know what that looks like. I don't, I don't know what the correct wording would be on that. But I think if they, if they're exposed, if they're required to miss work because of it, because of something, they're either exposed and required, or they actually test positive because of exposure on campus.
Quarantine, in order to quarantine.
I'm gonna say probably what you're, in what you're asking, from a school standpoint, about the only way that we would be able to know if, if it was from a school would be if we forced quarantine because a student in the class. From a, from a teacher who's gonna test positive, there's really no way, I don't, I don't think there's a way for sure that we can.
Well, and that's why we're still doing that. And that's what, that's what the point I'm getting at. If we can contact tracing and know that their exposure came from their job, then I think that we should take care of them whether they took leave in the fall or not, or what have you. They're here doing their job, I consider them frontline workers like a lot of others. They've been here from the get-go on this hill, and I think we need to take care of them.
That's not written down, but I mean, you, you and Chandler and whoever else, Miss Sumro, I guess you're part of this right on the front of this now. You know, I'm all for you leaving them the discretion to do that, because I would kind of expect them to do that, you know? If, if it's, if it's from the, the school, you know, if it's from family outside or something else. But if we do some tracing and it was truly right there in the classroom, and those teachers had to, you know, they're up here with that.
And we can amend that resolution with that wording. Because when we created that resolution before, it was very specific. So that would just, all we would need to do is add an additional line in that resolution to support that. And bring it, if you vote on it this evening, then we'll amend it, bring it back for signature based on, to add that in.
And I'm, Miss Sumro, I'm gonna put you on the spot, if you don't have to answer, I understand, I just, your bags are already in this anyway. But what I do know is, because we talked about this before I came, the report that she turned in to, yesterday, that she submitted yesterday to the state, zero positives. We have one teacher currently on quarantine, but that's not from a school related, that's spouse related, outside of school. And, and since we've come back from Christmas, I'm just trying to, I don't know that we have, I don't, have we quarantined? Have we quarantined a teacher based upon a student exposure since we've come back from Christmas?
If we did, it would be done more than one or two from, from a student exposure. One was a exposure to a teacher to teacher, that, from when we came back. Other than that, I don't think it was a student. No, we don't have those very often, is mainly family.
Right, and that's, I mean.
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
It's not like it's something that's going to be utilized across the board by every employee. It's gonna be on an as-needed basis, but I think we need to take care of those, no matter what position they hold, be it cafeteria, teacher, admin, whoever. Just like you said, you had a teacher to teacher, so that one teacher was family exposure, but then they came and exposed a teacher at work. That teacher who was exposed at work, I would feel we should take care of them even if they had, had to take leave in the fall. And going forward, I mean, who knows what, where this is gonna go? Nobody knows with COVID, but.
So, so I.
Yes, sir, the kids could have had it in the fall, or their, you know, spouse could get it in the spring. Have to be quarantined twice, right?
We had some quarantine, we had some teacher quarantine three times.
Three times in the fall?
Yeah.
But they still just get the, the ten days, is that right?
In the fall, it was.
It was as many as you need, and that's what we.
Correct. So, so into the spring, we, we extended ten days for those who did not, you know, have utilized it in the fall. Correct. And so it is, and how the resolution is set up, it, it ends this school year. I mean, so as of, I mean, unless something changes, I mean, when we start in August for the next school year, it's again, back to, back to operating as normal, if you're needing leave, you're using your leave.
Yeah.
So, and, yes, correct.
And for those who do have, just to let you know too, because we did make a change and added extended sick leave for employees as well that we had not had. So for any teacher that even if it's family, if they're out of days, they then qualify. We just have to have them ask. And Melody is really good about saying, remember we had extended sick leave, would you like to request that? So just even as a prod, because we forget everything we have. So that gives them up to twenty days at only a reduced rate. So they're not getting docked a day of their full daily rate, it's a reduced rate and it's up to twenty days. And all we need on that is like a quarantine notice from the doctor, or a positive test, just some medical documentation. And then they qualify for up to twenty days up there as well. Just as an additional for those who may be totally out to.
It's reduced by like half day or third or something.
And that's for any, any reason, any. And I like that, I just, I feel like we need to make sure we're protecting. If they're here working and it falls under that umbrella, if they were at work and they were exposed. I mean, like I said, that's for teachers, but you got.
For any, yeah, for anyone, anybody falls in that, so anybody auxiliary or professional staff.
I think of, you know, let's say somebody in the cafeteria, for example, that gets exposed, is required to quarantine. Maybe they test positive, maybe they have a child who then tests positive and they're out for who knows how long because of their exposure at school. And a lot of people, and not saying that it's not a blow to a teacher or to anybody else, but our lower-paid staff especially to not potentially get paid for something or not get full pay for something could be very detrimental, especially right now. So, that's just not possible.
Okay, so are you, let's go back to what was originally said. Are you making a recommendation in regard to amending the resolution? If I heard it right, basically based for, for a teacher or a staff member who is quarantined or tests positive.
Because of exposure at school or within the course of their job description, yes. With, I mean, it doesn't have to actually be occur on campus if they're, if through contact tracing, it's proven that it was in the course of their job. Does that make sense? Let's say Ms. Hunt takes the kids to one at Clay and she gets exposed to somebody there that's not one of our kids, that she's then required another director, just as an example. So that, I mean, she's not on campus, but that's within her job duties.
So if we do this, Ms. Sumro, do you have any idea how many? We're, we would have to go back and look at, to make it fair, we'd have to go back and look until Jan, January and see who we had, if we had somebody that was exposed at school.
So I guess the question would be, I know this is gonna come up, just working with Jennifer and Melody, because it's very great, and we're working with these. So we have an employee that says I was exposed. If it was not a formal contact tracing, because we will have that, where we had no exposure. So we've done contact tracing, we had a positive, but due to either people masking, social distancing, there was no exposure that we have found based on contact tracing. But the employee is adamant, two weeks down the road, that they are positive because of that exposure.
No, I think it needs to be worded that through contact tracing.
Okay, that's my question, because we can have that for formal contact tracing.
There needs to be a definite system for not just, I think I was exposed at school.
And that helps us.
That, that is important, because we have a staff member who says that they were, but we have nobody, if we have no positive cases in school, then that's gonna be a hard no.
Right, yes, I agree with you on that.
So I'm gonna add that wording that just says through formal contact tracing.
Yes, definitely. So how do we wanna word that?
Well, let's do some crafting.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll recraft the resolution and send it to Dr. McCullough to share with you to determine if that wording is correct, because then that will require signature.
Okay.
So you can take action tonight, which promise that, and then confirmation that it is worded as you want it worded.
Okay.
So then, there's been a, there's presented a motion to amend based upon wording which you just heard. And so we will, based upon your, based upon your decision here, your vote. If it is a yay, then we'll, we'll get that to you, if it's a no, then we'll get that.
Okay. Okay, so do I have a motion that we amend the board resolution regarding precautionary leave in response to discontinuation of FF-CRA?
Seconded.
A motion made by Brooke, seconded by, seconded by Linda. So if we have a motion and a second, we, is there any more discussion? We can vote on it, all for that. Board to one?
Five oh.
You voted, okay, that's five oh. Yep, thinking about someone else. All right, yes, all right. So consider approval of TIPS vendor proposal for bus purchase.
All right, as you know, we have not purchased a bus in the last several years. And so we are in the process of wanting to do that. We have several pieces of information there before you in your book. You have our inventory of buses, their year of manufacture, and really what they're used for. We have, Bobby's gone out for proposals. The proposal, we just put the one in there that the one is, that we're recommending to you. The other two proposals were higher than this. There is some discussion to be due on this, though. The price that you see of ninety-seven, eight twenty-three is a bus with seat belts. Any bus that is manufactured, purchased from a school since two thousand eighteen comes with seat belts, unless as a board, we, or you, as a board, you approve recommendation of, of not having seat belts on there. We have, we don't have any seat belts on our bus, on any buses we have, that we currently have. My recommendation is, is because it is, from a budgetary standpoint, it will save eight to ten thousand dollars by not having the seat belts on the bus. And I think from a compliance standpoint of, of the responsibility it's gonna put on the driver to make sure that every student on the bus is, is belted, keeps it on, is, is, is going to be hard. So in saying that, I'll, I'll stop and ask first if there's any questions in regard to the, to the bus proposal? Or in regard to the, whether or not we do seat belts or not, and take your thoughts in regard to that.
No seat belts.
Say what the, our attorney said about seat belts?
I will, he, I did thank you, I did say that. This is, actually, let me pull it out, because I did ask him that question. And the response was, if, if elementary, if we're transporting elementary students, opt out because improved time required to evacuate. Because with that, again, if, if, if there's an accident and kids aren't belted in, it's gonna take somebody to unbelt them to get them out. So there's improved time to get, to evacuate them and to routinely save time loading and unloading from a elementary standpoint as well.
Rush Bus Centers, are they pretty fast?
He said he can have one here this fiscal year.
I'm talking about if it's the Rush Bus Centers, it's basically, are they, do they go fast?
No, 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 about sixty-six miles an hour, dogs.
Okay, so when, where, when can we have one?
He said by the end of July, first of all.
Okay, start up for the next year.
Which will be, which is a relief, again, by the end of this fiscal year, we need to hear proposals by then. And they have, they have assurance they can have it.
Okay, and we've been about eight thousand less off of this ninety-seven?
He told Bobby eight to ten thousand less. So, so the recommendation's gonna be, the recommendation will be for maximum price of ninety-seven, eight twenty-three. With a, with the, with the understanding that these come with those seat belts.
That's what you're saying.
So that's my recommendation.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve up to ninety-seven thousand eight hundred and twenty-three dollars from Rush Bus Centers to purchase a bus as presented, do I have a second?
Second.
That's seconded, and that is a bus that I'm making a motion.
With no seat belts, yes.
All four. Did I get a second?
Yes.
Okay. Five oh.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you very much.
We're excited about that new bus. Y'all wanna drive a bus, they would love to ride around. Hopefully, we can get to six of them.
So, all you gotta do is call our event, I'll get you signed up, we get your license, and you can come ride with me.
Well, thank you.
It's daily, it's daily, twice a day.
I was gonna say, he is the bus driver, so if there is somebody who wants to drive, please talk to Bobby afterwards. So if there is somebody who wants to drive, please talk to Bobby afterwards.
Since we're board members, we can't be paid.
You can volunteer your services.
We can.
Even if I got paid more than that.
So you do that kind of CDL. Oh, okay, here's our last.
Oh, she has one of those?
I don't know.
Oh, you don't?
I don't know how to do an air brace. Our last item of, uh, of, of the time here is H. And we, in May of every year, there's a few, it's like we have seven board members, seven school board members. So myself and, well, anyhow, there's a few of us that are up every year for election. And right now, we appointed ones, Leann and Robert and Scott were up for election, that would be in May. Good news is no one chose to run against them. So that saves the school district a lot of thousands of dollars. So at this time, we are going to go to item H, where we cancel the May 20, uh, May 1st, 2021 general school trustee, school board trustee election. So we've gotta get all this right.
First, certify and vote.
Well, we don't vote on that, right?
So I believe we do.
All right, let's see, it says we shall declare the candidates unopposed. So I just have to declare those candidates unopposed. As the authority responsible for having the official ballot prepared, I hereby, I hereby certify the following candidate, candidates are unopposed for election to office for the election scheduled to be held on May the 1st, 2021. School Board Trustee, position one, Robert Taylor. School Board Trustee, position two, Scott Newsom. School Board Trustee, position three, Leann Ramsey. And at this time, we will, this is where we.
We'll approve, adopt the order of cancellation.
Okay, so it is recommended that the board of trustees approve, adopt the order of cancellation, declaring unopposed candidates Robert Taylor, Scott Newsom, and Leann Ramsey newly elected. The Mount Vernon Independent School District Board of Trustees hereby cancels the election scheduled to be held on May 1st, 2021 in accordance with section 2.053A of the Texas Election Code. The following candidates have been certified as unopposed and are hereby elected as follows. Robert Taylor, School Board Trustee, position one. Scott Newsom, School Board Trustee, position two. Leann Ramsey, School Board Trustee, position three. A copy of this order will be posted on election day at each polling place that would have been used in the election. So do we need to vote on that?
Yeah, need a motion to adopt the order.
Okay, so I need a motion that we adopt the order that we cancel the election.
So.
Motion made by Brooke, seconded by, I'll second.
Gladly, huh?
Yeah, all four? It's five oh that we cancel that election.
Congratulations, Scott.
Yes.
Okay. So, other business there? At this time, the board will now convene to close meeting to discuss personnel matters.
Just a little bit, just a little bit total. As of Monday, our enrollment was 1473, which was up a little bit from, um, from our December meeting, actually up nine from our December meeting. So hopefully that will continue to go up some.
Okay. That's good news then for this late year. All right, any further business there?
No, sir.
Yeah, we'll let y'all, do y'all need to do anything, close it or not? Kinda make y'all do that first. Anything else y'all need to do to close it out?
Madam Secretary, is there a record of any further business which should now be transacted?
There are none, Madam President.
Does any member know of any new or unfinished business which should properly come before this meeting? We are about to adjourn this meeting of the Mount Vernon FFA chapter. As we mingle with others, let us be diligent and labor just in our dealings, courteous to everyone, and above all, honest and fair in the game of life. This meeting is adjourned.
So at this time, the board will now convene to discuss personnel matters. I thought so, the intended loud, my thing, code 55107. Forward at 6:31 PM. Wicked for all I'm not open here. Okay, so at this time, the board now convenes back into open session at 7:34.
Okay.
And we will now consider professional new hires.
Two new hires I bring before you tonight are going to be John Williams. He will be known as Matt if you approve his hire. He will be a life skills teacher for us. Then it will not start until this next school year. And then Sawyer Cunningham will be a middle school teacher and cheer coach, and her position as well will not start until next school year.
Okay. So do I have a motion that we approve those new hires? Presented by Dr. McCullough?
Motion made.
Motion made by Linda, seconded by Scott, all four? That's five oh.
Thank you.
Re-employ probationary contract employees.
Let's see if she put those in there for, uh, no. I think she put them in in regard from probationary R. She just lists them by campus. And so if you would please act upon B and C together, re-employ probationary contract employees and term contract employees. Of the list that are for you in your book, the list of elementary teachers are listed first. And then you have your secondary teachers listed after that.
Okay. We're not gonna read those out loud.
Do you want me to go through them?
You have to.
Okay.
Do we not count any?
I'll count for you, I'll count for you.
Yeah, and we can get you a list, me too.
I don't have.
Okay. So do I have a motion that we re-employ our probationary contract employees?
So.
Motion made by Brooke, seconded by Josh, all four? That's five oh, all right. Renew term contract employees.
Can we use the same motion?
All the same.
Okay, all right, so that's all the same motion. Do that, okay, thank you.
So that's good to go. All right, okay, further business?
And we have one, we have a couple resignations to share with you. Coach Jeremy Mills, who is asking to be released out of his contract on April 2nd, that I have approved for him to do so. And then Mr. Sidney Hicks has tendered his resignation at the end of this school year.
Okay. So resignation of Mr. Mills and Mr. Hicks?
Yes, sir.
Any further business?
No, sir.
At this time, let's adjourn this meeting at 7:36.
Thank you all very much.